Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. And we're having a specially held commission meeting this morning for the purpose of being able to review whether or not we would want to extend the curfew and also to do a little bit of a recap on the march from yesterday. And so, let's begin with the recap. And Phillip, why don't you kick us off? And then Tony maybe chime in? And then we'd love to hear from Chief Garcia as well.
Well, good morning again to all of you. And again, thank you to all of us, I think, not only our police department, but all those other areas of the various departments of our city who helped support and of course, brought about a very, I think, very peaceful situation on yesterday. Again, as we had maybe a couple of comments as Commissioner Reed was just asking as he was signing on about the actual event. Not as large a thing as what they anticipated, but still was a very nice crowd as we all shared. And Mr. Delgado will give the numbers again, but several hundreds of folk, again, several hundreds of folk in attendance even with the march. And then, of course, they gathered, those are gathering already at the park when the marchers got there. I was sharing with you all that, I think it's just for information's sake, we need to understand some dynamics, because there's so many silos. It's like several silos of different groups doing different things, which is, you know, I think is important because they want to share and be able to tell us and let us know what their concerns may be, what kind of things they want us to be able to hear from them about. But as Tony was saying, Mr. Delgado, there is, I think the programming of it yesterday was more of a kind of a church feel. The ministry, I think, that was kind of doing that was not from our area, outside of our area. Mostly that was that way. As I was saying before we started, we just better wait until we all be on board and be able to hear our various comments. I think probably about maybe three or four of our local, I will call clergy and community leaders, as we call them, they might have been onstage. But other than that, you know, pretty much from our area, I mean, our area may not, not here in Lakeland, but certainly they're Polk Countyans. And I think that's important because you need to know who these players are. I was going to suggest, and of course, after we have different ones to share, as I know Commissioner McCullough has already mentioned that, you know, she knows someone was there and had come down, and others you may have come down or witnessed it from, however you saw it, Facebook Live, however. But again, I thought it was a very peaceful gathering. But I'm hearing from different ones from our community about when is, what's next? And I keep saying to myself, to them, yes, there is a next, but we as a commission must assure, ensure that we bring about the next kind of situation. And I know I had proposed to you all that we have a more of a community forum on race relations and have, of course, invited the public to come in to share as they would do. And I've spoken to, of course, City Manager Delgado about this particular kind of programming or forum, as it would be. And I think what I'm hearing more, three things that I brought down, which I call my three I's, and they are pretty much things that deal with inequities or inequalities, inclusion, and then improvement. And again, I call it the three I's, but we know several things, or even a couple of those things, I would say, we're, well, all of them, I think, we've in some way have introduced or tried, we're moving toward situations that we improve and bring about inclusion and not have any type of inequities or inequalities per se, but surely there's room for improvement. I know our mayor has, his introduction of coming on on board, as mayor had brought about some programming for inclusion. And then, of course, we always talk about being inclusive as a community here in our city. But I'm looking at one proposed to my colleagues as I'm sharing, that it's time, I think, now for us to do that community forum. We know now, and I think as I was talking with City Manager Delgado, because we're waiting to see what the edict would be coming from our governor here in San Antonio, because we're opening up, and we are opening up even more, we're up to 50% of what we can do in public facilities. We were looking at, and this is all things I've just been brainstorming and talking with him about, had not shared any things with you all, but I surely want to make sure you all know what I have been sharing. And that is, of course, places such as RP Funding Center, UK Theater, which sits about 2,300, 2,400 people, well, 50% of course is only about 1,200. And then we got Social Distance ourselves as well, even at that. So I think that's something that, you know, we could come out of that, that meeting. And I've spoken with several other community leaders about being a part of it. Certainly, the commission, the mayor, ourselves would be, I call the panel, maybe along with some other entities that would be a part of that as well. So as we hear from our citizens, as we hear from our residents, and you all are getting emails that I'm getting from all over our city, you know, I think that they want to make sure that we have this time where we can have dialogue and share at best. So that's what I was, want to say, how we should move forward at best, dealing with, again, the subjects of inequities or inequalities, inclusion, improvement, and how best we can do some of these things moving forward here in our city. I was shared a, and maybe you might have seen it, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure, but I was shared with a video that the City Plant City did just recently from their, the mayor and the city manager, and of course, a couple of community leaders about what they are doing and, you know, making sure they can stay on top of this thing when it comes to inequity or inclusion. And very nice little piece, I thought. And I thought, well, okay, well, I know that would be good, but I'm hearing more of our community saying they want to talk, they want to be able to share, they want to be able to hear from, want us to hear from them. And I think that the timing is at that point now, since especially so, we're able to gather as we can in a public facility that would accommodate, you know, us as best as it would. And I've already even spoken, as I said, with City Manager Delgado, but certainly have always spoken with even Mr. Tony Camarillo, to say, could we, do you see how this can fit in a room such as, or facility such as he is with the utilization of the UK Theater? So I would ask that we may be looking to do something like that here very soon.
Mr. Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do a real quick recap. I know Commissioner Walker touched on many things, but first and foremost, Black Lives Matter, their group, the ministerial groups did a wonderful job of managing yesterday's demonstration. It had a great feel to it, almost a vibe of a church service, as well as an opportunity for many people in their community to go ahead and speak. Had a number of speakers, had a number of entertainers, both local entertainers and school, school age entertainers. We anticipated the crowd, and Ruben can speak a little bit more on this, we anticipated the crowd would be probably 800 at its peak. Obviously, the day was very muggy and hot. I think that impacted some of...
I can hear you, sir.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. I want to also thank the FDOT. They worked with us in order to go ahead and close some of their roads associated with the march, and Ruben and his team of fine men and women at the police force managed that perfectly. And so, I'm gonna let Ruben speak a little more on that. But overall, very peaceful, very productive, and there were, there were many people from a variety of groups out there. So Ruben, do you want to touch on anything?
Good morning, all. Can you hear me? Just as the city manager said, we were very fortunate to have a very peaceful protest yesterday. We had worked with FDOT to shut down the state roads, as you saw, and we were able to keep a good perimeter to keep traffic away from the march, and they were able to peacefully march for quite a distance. It was about a three mile trek. So that's, a lot of people moved through a huge space. So we were definitely thankful that that all happened safely. Afterwards, the crowd dispersed pretty much on their own, found their way back to their vehicles without any incidents. I spoke with the organizers of that yesterday afternoon and gave them our appreciation for their cooperation with, working with us. They were pleased with the response they had received from the police department as well as the overall city, shared with me that they had work to do elsewhere and they would see us later. So I think that group at least feels that we're ready for some serious dialogue and to sit down and have some conversations, which may not necessarily need to be a large protest, but some functioning groups to get together and talk. We've already engaged in quite a few different group settings. We have one again tonight, then there are several more planned through the police department in conjunction with the other 100 and something neighborhood associations we already attend regularly. So there'll be plenty of opportunity to continue this conversation, I believe, and that's where we're headed.
That's excellent. Commissioner McCullough, would you like to share your perspective as well?
To echo Tony, it was extraordinarily hot and humid. So it was pleasing for us to see so many people in attendance and do the walk. I was able to talk to a couple of people who had marched, and they were just, it was very hopeful in my mind. I mean, the sense that I got from it is it was like a church service and great music in the park. And as we saw, my son and I came out of the front of City Hall to walk to the park, and we were able to see the, the march coming down Massachusetts. I get goosebumps still thinking about it. It was such a hopeful, I guess, feeling for me that so many people came together. It was a diverse group of people. And then, once they entered the park, and we walked over to the park before the marching group had gotten there. So it was just really, I felt like it was very positive, very peaceful. And I think it does show the sincerity of all sides to come together and really talk about the issue at hand. So I'm, I felt, I felt fortunate to be there.
Were there any other commissioners that were able to attend that would like to share? Well, I think the most important thing for us to take away from this is the protest makes a strong statement. It can happen in the right way. It takes planning on everybody's part to make that happen as it was executed well. And what's important for us is the next steps, which are that dialogue that Commissioner Walker is talking about. And to continue to be as intentional as we can be as a city and as intentional as is necessary, to be able to hear voices that want to have those inequities addressed, to want to see improvement take place, and want to see that happen through inclusion. So I love your three I's, Commissioner Walker. I think those are, are pretty great. And as we'll spend some time talking, and when we do this, this is heart-to-heart stuff. This is person-to-person as well as organizational. And I don't think it's one or the other. We, we need both because it calls us to that end. But one of the things that we want to do near term is try and get that on a schedule and get that set up. And in addition, and if there's a little noise in the background, I apologize, I'm with 44 of my family members, which is a lot. So just to have this quiet room is, is somewhat of an oxymoron in this environment. Anyway, the, the next step that we have available for us to take or to participate in is Sunday, there will be a prayer vigil from 11 to 2. I think that's right. Isn't that right? If you could take a quick look at that, City Manager Delgado, I think it's 11 to 2? And Commissioner Walker?
The next, the next one is, is coming Thursday evening, Mr. Mayor. There's the group of pastors that put together the Community Prayer Vigil of Faith and Hope that's Thursday evening. That's the one Mr. Cook was referencing that hopefully will go out and be put out website. It's been planned now for well over a week, or maybe second week. And it's just coming Thursday evening in Mon Park with a number of pastors from all of our city. And that's, I think, is a key because it's a group of our own, diverse group of our own clergy here in our city in Mon Park, and it's coming Thursday evening, 6:30 to 7:30. And of course, one you mentioned, of course, that is coming up after that, I think by one of our own employees here in our city that Mr. Delgado shared with us just recently this morning by email.
That's actually on Saturday, the 13th.
Saturday, excuse me, a Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday, 13th, that's right. So we'll get both of those, maybe could be, we could add as communication pieces, Mr. Cook, to be able to have those available for people. That gives us opportunities to pray for the city, pray for people, pray for hearts, and that's mega important in the process of that as well. Anything else to add? Yes?
If I may ask, I believe it's, we're at the point where I think we should, and if we could, even look at a date or two for this community forum where we have this dialogue, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important. I hope that before we get off our meeting today, I know we're gonna talk about the subject matter at hand when it comes to the curfew situation, but I hope before we get off this, our meeting today, excuse me, that we would at least have a tentative date or dates that we can look at to have staff to begin that process of having this, I call them, community forum, community meeting kind of dialogue, please.
So your suggestion is that we have staff come up with a few dates to propose to us that would, that could work in those facilities? Is that correct? Or you're trying to get that date iced down now, today?
Sure. I mean, we're here, all seven of us, we, along with staff, senior staff, and we can look at, I know I've already mentioned a couple of dates too, Mr. Delgado. I certainly not want to just move forward with anything without my colleagues. I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm working a silo, I work as a team. So I want to make sure that you all are aware of it and then get your all insight as to how best you think it should be as well, because the community, I would say, the community is waiting, so because we're getting emails, we're getting people telling us we need to talk and want to talk, they think we should have it. So I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure we move forward as best we can to give them what they're asking for.
City Manager Delgado, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm right now looking at schedules for commissioners and time. I mean, the, the dates that look best now, Commissioner Walker, based upon the city commission's schedule, would either be the week of, well, a few of the days, the 22nd, 23rd, 24th of June, as well as the 29th, 30th, and July 1st.
I think if we could do it in June, it's better.
Yeah, but I would, yeah, I would also get the 29th and 30th too, where everybody is here. And it looks like there's no night functions that, those two days too.
29th and the 30th?
Yeah, they look like everybody's here and everybody is available if they want to be there.
And what day is the 29th?
A Monday and a Tuesday. I'm trying to stay off Wednesday, that's a church day.
Tuesday night or Monday night, team? Monday night? I see.
Monday night.
Monday night? Commissioner? Okay, Monday night.
We will work with RP and try to get an idea of what they have available for us on the 29th of July, June, excuse me. I'm sure Tony Camarillo is listening, so we'll get with the RP, we'll check schedules. We'll tentatively put it on hold. I suspect this will be an evening function, gives people a little bit more opportunity to, to make it. Obviously, I'll, I'll get with, I would ask, and Commissioner Walker and I talked a little bit yesterday and the day before, about who you would like to see on the panel. I suspect commission, and if there was anybody else from the community that you'd like to at least have as part of this forum, I won't call it a panel, because I'm not sure exactly what, how it's gonna take shape, but obviously, if there's anybody else in the community you'd like to do that. But I will immediately check with Tony Camarillo on the date of Monday, June 29th, in the evening, early evening, to try to see if we can schedule something.
Excellent.
The other, the other issue that we have to talk about today, other than maybe taking a look at...
I think Commissioner Walker had one, I think. Go ahead, Commissioner Walker.
Yeah, yes, as Mr. Delgado has said already, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues, I want to make sure colleagues will have time to be able to hear and be able to give some thought to, you know, again, this, I hate to say a panel, but outside of ourselves, the commission being there in front of whatever hundreds of people that may show up, and I believe we'll have a good turnout, once it's advertised, when it's public, once it's publicized, that this community forum is, is being discussed, it will be, there will be discussion or have dialogue to sort of come in and share with us as a, as a, the elected body. I do believe we will have a good turnout. And it's something I think they're wanting, but of course, having to make sure we can plan it properly and make sure we're getting as best we can, and people in a particular location that's under our, you know, purview. But now, I want to make sure my colleagues here, what, what we're saying, and, because we will meet again, again, what, the 15th, I think, is that, no, excuse me, we've got agenda study before the 15th, to, to share who you think would be the kind of people that we want to have there. As I've spoken with Mr. Delgado, am I sharing with you now some folk that came to my mind? And as I was dealing with those three I's, as I've shared with you all, when it comes to inequities or inequalities, and it comes to inclusion and improvement, I certainly looked at some parameters around where I think we all know, we have worked towards a city to make sure that we can deal with those subject matters as best here in our community called Lakeland. And I know we've done some things with law enforcement, so I think law enforcement needs to be there. Our chief, possibly even inviting Sheriff Greta Judd, because he's the county sheriff. He's the high sheriff of the county. I looked at that as far as that, I thought maybe even some business.
We'll look, we'll, we'll put together some thoughts. And anybody, if you, anyone has any individual thoughts of people they'd like to see included, why don't you just send those to City Manager Delgado? That would be good.
So is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
What I'm suggesting that we put in, what I thought is given to...
So you do, and let's, let us all kind of percolate some names that we'd like to put in there. And then, one of the things that the city manager and I can do is sit down and do, go over that and take a look at how we could create a suggested forum and maybe be able to even have some of those ideas by Friday.
I think that'd be good, Mr. Mayor, but I certainly will make sure that we're all, we're all part of the makeup.
Yes.
That's all we're asking.
With you 100%. With you 100%.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Delgado?
The item on the agenda today is a recommendation as it regards extending curfew. Ruben and I have been in constant contact with every other municipality as well as the county over the last week. As you know, we've only had to extend curfew through Tuesday morning of last week. The rest of the week, we have not had a need to go ahead and extend any type of curfew, including last night. Ruben, I don't know what your thoughts are on this, but it would be my recommendation at this point that we go ahead and discontinue that opportunity unless, of course, unless, of course, there's a need and it, and it's discussed from a countywide perspective. And then, we will obviously work very closely with the Polk County Sheriff's Office, the county, and any other municipalities that might see a need here in the near future. And we would bring that in front of you prior to going ahead and implementing that. Ruben, your feelings on that?
Yes, sir. I'm in agreement with you. The only concern I have is if we see unrest either coming out of Orlando or Tampa, we have to be able to quickly move into a curfew situation to not have an area that is inviting to an overspill of those unlawful protests on either side of us. So I do not see a need for one now. I certainly see a need to be able to quickly move to one if we were to see movement towards our city from unrest in other areas close by.
Probably need Palmer to weigh in first.
Sure. The authority that you've given the city manager to declare a curfew expired as of 5:00 AM this morning, so if you want to extend that authority for, for Tony to do that, you would need to amend the resolution you passed last Monday to extend it.
So is there any interest in amending that resolution, or do we let it stay as is?
I mean, your alternative would be to have a special call of meeting which requires three hours' notice to reinstate that.
So we're not doing it, we could reinstate it in this meeting if desired, but otherwise, we need three hours in advance to do that. And so, not taking any action today would let it terminate? Correct?
That's correct.
So what is the preference of commissioners? Commissioner Franklin? I'm looking at your face.
I was just thinking, you know, even before we were doing everything in unity with the sheriff and countywide, would we not be able to man up that same sort of response if there were intel suggesting things are coming our way in the county and the sheriff implemented a curfew for the, for Polk County? Now, I would imagine if that kind of thing, it would trigger it coming from Tampa, Orlando, or heading our way, Sheriff Judd would probably step in and issue a curfew himself.
The problem, the sheriff doing that is that there's a question about the language of the statute that he does that under. I know that the county has, the Board of County Commissioners, as opposed to sheriff, has countywide authority, including within the incorporated limits. They've got an emergency order as well in place that would expire today. I don't know what their plans are to extend that. That authorizes their county manager to impose a curfew. But there's, there's some question about whether the sheriff could impose a curfew within the incorporated limits.
So why don't we, in keeping that out of question, just work it this way? If the sheriff were seeing a need for a curfew, he's communicated to Chief Garcia and our city manager the need for a curfew. A three-hour window is probably going to be an adequate amount of time also to be able to respond. We get notified immediately and work for a quorum of attendance and make a decision at that time so that we don't leave any question about jurisdictional issues and we can be in sync, which is really what you would have preferred, Palmer, probably in, in round one in the first place, correct?
That, that we do a special call of meeting?
Yes.
My only preference is that we not rely solely on the sheriff's curfew authority, because there's some question about that. How you do that, you know, I don't have any preference.
So do you all feel as, Commissioner Reed, go ahead.
Thank you. There again, as June, I'm not sure about some of our other commissioners, but I'm gonna be gone some of the time. And I would feel adequate, I know Tony's done a good job and is very thrifty in his precision-making, and subsequently, I wouldn't have a problem extending his authority through the end of June. That way, we wouldn't have to have another meeting if we didn't need to.
Well, would you want to, if you were saying that, would you want to tie that in alongside if, in fact, the county made a decision?
Absolutely, yeah. I think it has to be unanimous. It's hard to do one without the other.
Okay, comments from other commissioners on that? Commissioner Franklin?
Just one other thought on that, Mayor. You know, part of what I was hearing from folks last time is if we're gonna try to go from state of normalcy to a state of curfew in less than three hours, we're not even getting the word to the citizens. I had a lot of folks last time expressing concern that, am I gonna go out and be arrested because I go out to a restaurant and I didn't even know we were under curfew? I just, I don't see with the climate we're in right now, that we're in such extremis, that we've got to be ready at a nanoseconds' notice to go under a citywide curfew. I just think, you know, some of us may be out of town, but I think we should be able to get a quorum. And if we do find out through travel plans that we can't have a quorum for a meeting, we probably all need to know that anyway.
Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you. Sorry, my computer decided to reboot unexpectedly, so I dropped off for a few minutes, I'm coming back into the discussion. But I, I would be okay with letting the, the authority expire and, and knowing we can pull this group back together pretty quickly if we needed to. I understand Commissioner Reed's point of view, and I think that's a valid point, that if there are people traveling, and I think Tony and the chief, you know, you all have managed this very well, and I have complete confidence in, in you to do that. But do we need to keep an extension of the authority right now? I don't see the need for it. And if I'm not hearing otherwise from you, if you're comfortable with that approach, then I'm, I'm good with letting that expire. And then, you know, we know if we need to... And then, you know, we know if we need to come back together and reevaluate quickly that we can.
Commissioner Walker?
Similar comments, I guess, I can two walkers if they agree, so Commissioner McLeod gives the two walking and agreeing. And I can agree with what his comments are, as well as hearing what I think Commissioner Franklin have shared in respect to the fact, I believe we should be able to come together in reasonable time to do, take care of this. And I would say, I'm, I have no problem with it, inspire it as it has already by Thursday this morning, and move forward at best under what we, what has been suggested, when it's coming together as a meeting, when needed.
There's actually a good relax factor in this too, to some degree, for businesses, because they know that there's not the quick trigger, you know, that they'd hear that there's a special meeting being called and that kind of thing, and so we'd have some ramp up time and capability and that. So I think that would give them some encouragement as they're trying to reestablish their businesses economically at the present time. Okay, so if we want to renew it, we need a motion, and if we don't, then, yes, Commissioner Walker?
A motion to renew or a motion to not renew? That's what...
You don't have to do anything to not renew. In other words, it expired this morning, so we don't have to take any additional action. And then what we would just be saying by assent in this conversation is that if there's a need to reconsider, we'd have a special call meeting. Okay, I see no motion. All right, are there any other matters that anybody would like to bring up before the commissions? Have a fantastic week. Is there a motion to adjourn? I see one, and a second by Commissioner Reed, some Commissioner McCulley and Reed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Same, unanimously passes. Thank you so much for carving out your time today.